Judy. Uh Lori.
Hi Lori, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, Mike, Michael.
Well, Mike Sharon Eber.
Uh Sue.
Sue Stoffey Marlborough.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary Kojewski Marlborough.
Joe.
Joe Cuddy Eber.
Jessica. Carrie. Gabriel.
Gabriel Marks Eber.
Uh Eric.
Eric Shetland, Rob Andover.
Okay, and I'm Mike Morris from Eber. Uh then administration Scott.
Scott Luskey, African Superintendent.
Uh Penny.
Penny Brustow, High School Principal.
Uh Michael.
Michael Cerusi, Middle School Principal.
Great, is Eva with us tonight?
Eva Alvin, this is Erica.
Right, is there any other administrative folks that I'm, I'm missing?
We have some folks on.
Christine Harwig, Director of Human Services.
Christine Wunsch, Small Supervisor, People's Services. And Christine, can you say your name again?
Christine Harwig, Director of Human Services.
Great. Okay, anybody else that we missed? And then just our student representative Lily.
Lily Chantro, in over.
Great, is there anybody else that I missed from the roll call that we need to call?
We have our other student rep, Ron.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm gonna try to vote for him, sorry about that.
That's okay, uh Rowan Ackland, uh Eber.
Great, thank you for being here, folks. Okay, uh this time I'd like to uh ask if we all stand and uh cite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare that the United States of America is a republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our. Okay. At this point, I'd like to open up the meeting for public comments, I'd like to first read a statement and then we'll uh, we'll turn it over to you folks that have uh, are just are, joined us to participate. So Eber, Andover, and Marlborough Community Engagement and attendance at Board of Education Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so that Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. All right, at this point, do we have uh anybody that's um here to present?
We do, Mike, we have somebody here, person.
Okay, please.
You want me to up here?
Sure, you're welcome, or you're welcome to do it from there.
Okay.
Uh my name is Ryan Voyston, I'm from Andover, uh I have two daughters in high school, and um, just kind of felt like letting it out a little bit, so bear with me. Um, I felt it was very important to voice, to be a voice for the voiceless, meaning our children. It has become nearly impossible to sit back and watch as our youth are needlessly forced to change their mask up and follow these illogical rules and regulations when we have plenty of data and statistics to support the return to normalcy. Facts speak for themselves, since about July twenty twenty, we have known that thankfully, our, those eighteen and under have virtually zero mortality. We now know that healthy children, birthed eighteen, have statistically similar severe outcomes to R S V and a seasonal flu. According to C T dot gov data, the risk of death to somebody that's zero to nineteen is roughly point zero 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 four seven, making it lower than a seasonal, a seasonal flu. In the same vein, we pressure our kids to help protect the community and also the vulnerable, but since the COVID shots have been out for over a year, especially for those in high-risk categories, that is no longer their responsibility. Sadly, we have taught our youth to be afraid and fearful, all the while causing far more harm than good with these overreaching health policies. Doctors and therapists around the globe have openly recognized now that collateral damage caused by COVID restrictions in our children are far more dangerous than it does in itself. Depression, anxiety, drug use, and suicide are skyrocketing. Emotional, physical, and social well-being has been stunted. Kids are shaming one another more than ever and bullying over COVID masks and vaccines. As adults and parents, we are responsible for this. It has become maddening to watch and needs to end. Uh to be quite frank, this is, we have lost the opportunity to teach. There is an important lesson to be learned. Our healthcare system has failed us. We should be helping young people understand that the responsibility for your own personal health and choices in regards to exercise and nutrition are the keys to positive health outcomes. Obesity, heart disease, diabetes, and mental health play a much more significant and serious role in their lives moving forward. It is time to eliminate COVID case counters, mask mandates, and so much focus on the virus. Kids eat lunch unmasked, hang it on the weekends unmasked, but for some reason we continue this awkward optical game. It's shameful to see young people with face coverings entering sports, in class, or anywhere on school grounds. The data speaks for itself. With that said, the average COVID respiratory droplet is zero point zero six to zero point one four microns, and the average cervical mask only prevents microns sized one to ten. Also, the average gap between each of our kids' masks on a daily basis is about one tenth of an inch, which translates to twenty-five hundredths micron-sized gap, thus supporting that. There have been no changes in case counts nationwide, masked or unmasked. Please open your eyes and get back to allowing our children to enjoy some sense of normalcy. I realize this is a polarizing topic and not everybody sees eye off. This is imperative that we take after this during the winter. Parents and children should be making their own choice moving forward. We are one of roughly only twelve states who made such policies anymore. Please can we move on? Let the kids enjoy sports after school activities, problems, and all the rest of it. Stop taking away or modifying the simple things that give the youth wonderful memories and experience that will last a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else that uh came to speak today? Is there anybody online that uh, that joined us to speak? Okay, I'm gonna assume that we are finished with public comments, thank you. Uh is there any need to add or delete any particular agenda items? All right, nothing heard, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to student representative reports.
Um good evening, everyone, it's Miss Sue Bannister. Nothing really is going on, um but I'll just catch you up on some of the social aspects of this time of year, um for senior class and for entire school. So, sports is looking pretty good for the winter, the girls' basketball team is nine and oh, and the boys' basketball team is I think seven and oh, hopefully about to be eight because I believe they're playing. Um and indoor track is doing really well, um we've moved out of conference meetings now, only two people are attending, but William Calhoun, you probably know him, um he has about like six school records now, so that's pretty cool. Wrestling has also succeeded very well, I'm not really sure on the scoring work, but I know they're doing, doing good. And um a lot of people are committing to colleges now, which is really exciting, um their whole future is sort of shaken up. And um with that, the application process is pretty much over. For seniors, a lot of the deadlines were in early mid-January, um except for like those rural admission schools. Um and now, the last day of semester one is tomorrow, so with semester two rolling around, seniors are sort of easing that, um when it comes to effort. So, um, because for those of you who don't know, um, uh classroom and GPA, they solidify after first semester, so that sort of decreases instead of coming hard. And, um, um, I think everyone's really enjoying their time back at school, and the main thing people are just concerned about is, um, everyone wants to know in graduation. It's nice that we have that on the agenda, so we'd all feel like to report to some of our parents and that. Thank you so much.
Okay, so um, I wanted to talk a little bit about like um, the, where we progress with COVID regarding like in Ram, in particular throughout the community. First of all, I think that, you know, when you look a few weeks like back, and like back from March, and we weren't in the exact, absolutely, we were in a good situation, or we were in a situation that we wanted to be in, with all of the uh, COVID cases, like I think we kept like up to thirty at some point, and it started increasing. But um, now we're finding that, you know, we do have like uh smaller amounts uh each, each day, and then it is decreasing from the numbers previously. Like um, I know that uh Dr. Cerusi uh reported under cases at some point, so I thought that that was um, I thought that that was a good step forward, and I just wanna say that that the community itself in Ram is doing a good job at making sure that, you know, um, they, they, I feel like they already understand that in order to like slow down this spread like throughout the, like, uh school in general, um the students are applying their roles, and I, and I find that part is good, and I think that um, the administration is also doing a good job, um like, you know, enforcing, like, you know, mask wearing and like social distancing so that like, you know, you can keep kids like in school, because nobody wants to be in a situation where, you know, kids are out of school for a long period of time and having trouble managing their workload and stuff like that to that point. So I, and I just think that it's important now that um, I feel like everybody is doing their part and um, making sure that COVID cases do their part.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, the Board of Ed Chair Report. So a couple of things that I'd just like to uh add to the meeting. Um first, I wanted to uh thank the students for their effort in uh, in doing what they can to try and make things work. Not simple for everybody, not everybody agrees with all the requirements, but uh it's challenging, but you've all risen to the occasion and you're, and you're making it work, like uh the reports all told us, uh life is moving on, sports is happening, and we're doing really well, Taboo. Um, college applications are being uh submitted and, and uh people are committing. Um, seniors are becoming lazy on the first day of semester two, which is uh, the slide. Um, you know, all those things indicate that we're headed in a, in a good direction with the student body, and I appreciate everybody's effort in that vein. Uh same thing for the staff, uh you know, it's not simple to make that, all of these things work, um covering different classes, organizing to make sure that uh, there's enough um supervision and uh, and um, uh faculty available to teach different classes as we go through the challenges of people being out. Uh really appreciate all of your efforts, I know it's not simple and, and uh you're going above and beyond. Same thing for the school nurse, I think a special uh, uh thank you for all the efforts in trying to communicate, coordinate the mitigation efforts. So really a, a, a daily fight and I truly appreciate everything that she, that uh is being done there. And then, and that also goes for the administration, uh supporting everybody in that effort, trying to make sure that uh, uh throughout all this, that the, the best effort to put our best foot forward and, and make things work uh is really appreciated. Uh then last thing, I would just like to say to fellow uh Board of Education Subcommittee members, as the meetings get forward and we start to, you start to add extra hours uh dedicated towards trying to make all of the different Subcommittee topics work, I truly appreciate everything you're doing and uh, thanks for making that extra time. That being said, the reporter, the superintendent.
Great, thank you, Mike, and I can assure everybody that uh Mike Rowan and I did not collaborate on our comments um this evening, but um I need to do likewise and throw out huge thanks to um the entire Ram community. I think that, you know, we're not all on the same page for all of the separate issues, but I think everyone agrees that students need to be in school, and we need to provide a school of experience that is as normal as it possibly needs, um and one that includes dances, one that includes athletics, one that includes all of the club activities that um, you know, so many students really get so much out of. Um, and I really, so want to specifically thank our, our, our families. Our parents have done a spectacular job of communicating with their nurses, were keeping us up to speed on, you know, where their own children are, um in regards to how they're feeling, and if they're not feeling well, we're keeping them home. Um our students have done an absolute, spectacular job of coming back after the break, and it, it's hard to imagine how weird it was coming back after a half a winter break and having as many as a hundred and seventy students out in, at the high school, and at middle school, and you had as many as sixty kids out on the day. That's a huge number of, of students out, and I'm sure both Lily and Rowan, you've probably experienced classes that were a fraction of, you know, the size you typically see. Really happy to report that today, we had sixteen students out at the middle school and thirty-six students out at the high school, which is a very normal, typical number, so I think we've really done a great job of, of getting back to as normal as we can be. Um certainly, our, our teachers, I think, have the remarkable job of, we didn't know what we were coming back to, you know, and, and quite frankly, as educators, you know, we talked to other districts, and there were a lot of districts that were wondering if they're gonna be able to remain open on a particular day, or if they were gonna be open for the full week coming back and, you know, what the increased cases might do. Um, and I, our teachers just did a spectacular job of coming in and not just making sure that they were delivering the instruction our students deserve and need, but they were making sure that they worked with all those students that weren't here, that were at home still, making sure that their students did what they wanted. Um and certainly our, um the rest of our staff, our nurses, our air professionals, um our bus drivers, our custodians, you know, did a really fantastic job of working behind the scenes, making sure that the teachers and the students could do the thing they need to do um while they were here. And certainly, um it's the administrators that kind of make it all come together and send those positive messages out, and so, you know, I, I really stand back in awe of the Ram community and the peace and the heart that everyone has played in it. And certainly as Board of Ed, and you guys should be very proud of what the community does, and I know the community is incredibly grateful for your support and, um, you know, all that you do on their behalf as well, but.
Great, thanks.
Thank you guys.
All right, great. Okay, so we'll move on to item eight, the consent to the agenda. So the uh minutes of previous meeting have been shared, if there's no discussion or any concerns, uh is there a motion to accept the meeting? I don't, uh, I need a minute.
I make a motion to accept the minutes? Mike Sharon?
Mike Sharon?
I will pass that motion, uh Gabriel Marks.
Okay. Uh, all in favor? Do we need to do a roll call, Scott, or should, can we do a?
Um, probably do a roll call, Mike, just because we do have some, we do have, well, it's just you and Sue, am I correct? That are remote? I think we can do a hand call here, and then you and Sue do a voice call, it'll be fine.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? Any guests? Okay, great. Okay, next item, old business. So uh this uh, old business, discussion and possible action regarding a letter to the Connecticut Department of Health. Uh you can see the enclosure. So at our last meeting, we had uh, made a, uh, made the decision to develop a letter and uh forward it to the Connecticut Department of Public Health, and our Department of Health, uh in regard to uh the masking differences uh regarding students who are vaccinated versus unvaccinated. Uh shortly after the meeting, I want to say even the next day, um, the, those um, those guidelines were retracted and changed to uh eliminate essentially, I think, the crux of what our intent of our letter was. And as I communicated to the different board members, the idea that um, maybe we, you know, the circumstances, um, there was some feedback to say, well, you know, we, maybe we still want to send a letter, uh just from the perspective of, well, we, we don't like the decision-making that went into this and uh the lack of, you know, maybe incorporating feedback from the different uh towns and administrations and things of that nature. Uh but there was also some feedback from other members that said, hey, you know, we only have one voice to use, uh and, and so much um, um ammunition, for lack of a better word, as far as um, you know, being able to get our points across and, and for having when we do speak up for it to actually matter. And so I thought they were both very relevant points, and what I had asked at that point was that we could table this letter, given that the restrictions that were kind of the the core of it, while the action had already been taken, so that we could as a group talk about it and then maybe make a decision about whether or not we want to proceed with some sort of a letter, or if we wanted to decide at this point, maybe we would table that and, and not, and not do so. So I think at this point, what I'd really like is just to ask, um, you know, the board members for any comment or feedback on that, thoughts about, you know, what, what you believe our next right steps are. Go ahead, Eric.
I don't think we need the letter.
Okay.
He was, he said, uh, just to repeat, to make sure I heard it correctly, he said, we don't need the letter, he thinks we don't need the letter?
Yes, correct.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Sue, did you have any thoughts on it?
I second that, I don't think we need it at this time, but I, I'm definitely ready to circle back if anything changes.
Okay. Um, any of the other members, Gabriel, Mark, uh Mike?
I would say that I was disappointed at first, I think that uh one of our primary responsibilities is to defend our students, and the uh, the discrimination that was part of the policy that was, that was employed by um, the state B O E, the state uh Board of Health, I thought it was unfair. I, I think that even their explanation lacked uh in the true meaning behind what our feelings were, but at the same time, I also recognize that in the coming weeks and months, there's gonna be a desire for us to probably take a similar position on other matters, and I recognize the value of preserving uh our position for future opportunities. I, um, my tone's changed, I'm at this, I'm, I'm okay with not issuing the letter at this time.
Okay. Mary or Joe or Lori, any thoughts?
I agree, this is Joe, I agree that um, we should table this letter and save our voice for stuff down the, down the line that's gonna come up.
Okay.
Uh Gabriel Marks, I agree with Mike and Joe, I think that we ought to save our, like, like yours said, save our voice for other issues that could come up in the near future.
All right, okay. Lori or Mary?
Yeah, I, I sort of feel like the way the current letter is written, it's a moot point at this point, and it would have to be entirely changed to be more of a advocacy perspective of in the future, when you make decisions, think of F Y R Z, and I'm not really sure this Department of Public Health wants to receive.
It might be less effective, right?
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I agree, I thought there, there might be something that comes up in the near term that is uh, is very definite, and we want to have a voice on it, so.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess at this point that I would uh ask um, and that uh, make a motion to uh not, uh, um, develop and send the letter to the Connecticut Department of Public Health, uh contradicting what we had agreed to in the last meeting.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, that was our second.
I'll second Gabriel Marks.
Great, thank you. And we'll do a roll call vote real quick. Uh Lori?
Sorry, yes.
Uh Judy? Michael Sharon?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Uh Mary?
Yes.
Uh Joe?
Yes.
Uh Gabriel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And uh Mike Morris, I vote yes. All right, thank you. Okay, new business. So Scott, you want to take over for distribution of the uh, the budget and the discussion?
Absolutely, thank you. Mike, um, so what I'm about to do is fill up your time for the next five or six weeks, but this will be the first of what will be, you know, a number of budget meetings. Um really what my goal tonight is, is to just give you the most general outlines for the actual proposed budget that each of you have, and, and board members that aren't with us, you have digital copies of this, and we'll mail the physical copies home to you tomorrow. Um, and in the binder, you've got the proposed budget, and then you have the breakout by object and program, so you can have um a more detailed book. And Mike and Penny, we have more copies over here, but why don't you grab those and distribute it if anyone would like, it's right between the right and the left box. Um, and, and then I also have um a slide presentation that um everybody has a copy as well. That's what I'll be walking you through this evening, to help you get a better handle on the larger community itself, in terms of what's in it, what are some of the key driver factors um for the budget, what the steps are moving forward um over the next few weeks, and um what our role of working together will be as the um crowd, will eventually be the Board of Education, but at the moment, it's still a long proposed budget to you, and then once um, you know, you have had a chance to review it and modify it, then um, your budget, but we'll talk about those dates as we go through it. So Eric, could you run the presentation?
Okay, I'm going to the first slide. And um, some of this, you, you've seen, I've gotten at least a couple of times already. Um in my December presentation, um some of these slides are identical to what you've already seen, but I think it's important just to put into context that as we develop the proposed budget for you, um, we're not making it out of whole thought, we're making sure that what we're putting together supports the mission, the vision, and goals for the district. So, we begin with a strategic plan, and there's a copy of the strategic plan um on that first slide, our mission, our vision, our theory of action. Um, I know I've mentioned it once or twice in the past, but um, next year is the scheduled year to begin the process to review and revise the plan, which is perfect timing with the onset of the new script deadline, so. But be assured that as, as we go through the numbers, you sometimes lose track of the fact that, you know, these numbers are there to support our students and our, our staff, and making sure that, you know, that school works as best as it can, and we're all looking at those. The next slide, Eric? You know, commitments that the district has made, developing fiscally efficient and accountable budgets to maximize resources, I think you're gonna see a lot of examples of that in this particular budget. Providing welcoming, accepting, welcoming, tame, accessible, and safe facility in school community, and you're gonna see a lot of focus on that area as well. Offering a globally competitive world-class education for all students, certainly continues to be the overriding goal of any budgets we produce. Hiring, training, and retaining high-quality professional staff, engaging the community through active outreach and ongoing communication, so all of those are, hopefully you'll, you'll see evidence of these purposes to go through the budget. The um, the strategic plan has five goals. All students will have access to an active engagement regarding learning opportunities where they experience growth and develop skills, competencies, and dispositions to be successful in college and career, and I'm sure many folks are hoping that one of those options won't be remote learning, that we can do that all while we're here, so that is, continues to be the goal. Uh goal two, develop professional staff, promote positive school climate. Goal three, develop budgets that address a declining enrollment in the district and are fiscally responsible and responsive to the needs of the school, towns, and state. Develop implement strategies to enhance and further develop a culture of safety, acceptance, pride, and support for students, families, staff, and community members, and enhance our facilities in order to support innovative and fully accessible teaching, learning, and extracurricular opportunities. And again, I hope we'll see evidence of all of that as we go through the budget. Um, the next slide is on the timeline, and I know we have a, an agenda item a little later on that, that might tweak some of these, but um this is pretty much the timeline that we've been working on as, as long as I can remember. Um, the top is January twenty-fourth, that's where we are tonight, presenting the administrative budget proposal. Um, next Monday, we're scheduled to have the department heads, our um, Special Ed, People Personnel, Technology, Facility, and Athletics, those are the, the largest programs in the budget, so um each of those directors will be presenting their budget in more detail than I'll be presenting tonight. Because again, that's where most of the funds that you're going to ultimately decide on are focused in. The next two, um, budget workshops, we, in the past, have structured them a little differently. So we always had the department coordinators attending one of the budget meetings. In the past, the department coordinators did fairly elaborate presentations of their departments and their budgets. Part of the reason is that you don't get to see the department coordinators all that often, and it's a nice chance to bring everyone up to speed on what are the goals of each of the departments? Where's the money, you know, going? What are they, what's, what's the emphasis? How does it support their goals? What we found, though, is that doing all of that during the budget season meant that you had much less time to talk and discuss the budget. And instead, we're kind of sitting and listening to people tell you about it. So the way we've, we've kind of modified over the last couple of years is that department coordinators will be presenting a very short overview, maybe two, three slides. And then they'll be available to answer any questions. So it's, it's more discussion and give and take than it is simply presenting. I have a, um, a date in there, February twenty eighth, as a proposed budget, uh, call it forum for the budget to invite public members of the public to. And again, that's going to depend on where we are at that point. I, I say proposed because you may still be in the process of building the budget and may not feel ready. Or you may be at a point where you really want to public it, and so it fits well. So that's, some of these dates will decide on as we move through. April fourth is, is, is set in stone, and that is a, um, a public budget hearing and a special, special board of ed, um, meeting to accept the budget number. So, um, you just need to make sure that between tonight and April fourth, you're at a point where you're comfortable with adopting, um, the budget. So that becomes the board budget. And April fourth is a critical date because you need to have accepted or, or produced a budget in time for the referendum in May. So April fourth is a drop date date you need to approve that. And then May third is the budget referendum, reaching three towns. You'll be voting on the, um, on both the operating budget for RAM and then separately the capital budget for RAM. I included two additional things. The Marvel Board of Finance and the Hebrew Board of Finance have both reached out and asking for a presentation on where the budget is at that, at given time. So February sixteenth, the Marvel Board of Finance has asked us to present where we are in the budget process there. And likewise, the Hebrew Board of Finance on March eighth. I don't have a date yet for it over, but as soon as I do, I'll include that. So give a sense of, of where we're going and where we're set out for us. Briefly, the, the budget development process, I reviewed this in December as well. You know, it really starts with the principals, the directors, department coordinators, beginning in October. And so what you're seeing now from January is a culmination of all of the work and discussion that we've, um, focused on beginning in October to ensure that we, we present to you what we believe is a reasonable, um, budget that fulfills all of the education needs of our students and provides all the materials that we need with, with being the responsible. And then, okay, so now actually start getting into the need of what you'll see in the, in the book. Enrollment projections are, um, critical to each of our budgets in that, as, you know, I think all of you know, the long-term enrollment projections for RAM is for decreasing enrollment. And we've seen decreasing enrollment certainly. And you'll notice there are a couple of charts in the book that outline historical enrollment, and then they project into the future what enrollment's going to look like. Looking at this year, we're, we anticipate, well, we anticipate by, um, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, we'll have one hundred and sixty-one fewer students than we would have right now. And again, a lot can happen in the next five years, but nonetheless, the projection is that there'd be a consistent decline. Looking ahead to next year, it's actually one year of a very slight decrease. And I think that decrease is actually offset a little bit. So the anticipation is that we have five fewer students at the middle school. Beginning of next year, twenty-one fewer students at the high school. I have a caveat there in bullet number four that we are seeing a consistent shift in students who are leaving us to attend GOAG schools, magnet schools, and tech schools returning to RAM. So from the first day of this school year, we've had thirteen students so far who have returned to us, one at the high school, from those, you know, choice programs. So I think if we're looking at twenty-one fewer high school students next year, in reality, I think it's going to be less than that. So I, I don't see next year as one of those years where there are significant opportunities to reduce staff. As you look down the road in projections, you know, when we're losing fifty to a hundred students, then, then there are going to have to be some serious discussions along those lines. I don't think we're here this year. Next slide. So there are some, um, proposed increases. And some of these, quite frankly, the, the first four bullets, we have been funding through the ESER grants, so the grants that we got, you know, COVID. These are important enough that we believe that we need to carry on funding for some of the things that we've been doing over the last couple of years. The Point Four P E Health feature, I'm going to come back to this in a little bit because there's another position down a couple of pages from here that's going to have, um, kind of impact this. We, um, the, the state of Connecticut increased the graduation requirements for students. So at the beginning of two thousand twenty-three, students have to acquire one additional whole credit for graduation. In addition, they need to acquire additional elective credits. They need to have additional credits in health and P E. And what we discovered is that our students were really, for, for that reason alone, but also during the pandemic, we found that students tended to be fairly interested in wellness courses, the courses that were outside of the box of, you know, their traditional courses. So we did see a significant spike in enrollment in those courses and, um, which we continue to see. And so I think as much to make sure that our students can meet those additional graduation requirements, we felt that we certainly feel it's important to maintain that, that additional Point Four. The academic labs at the middle and the high school, um, these really are, are, are there specifically to support students that are still struggling a bit coming back from, from the pandemic. And whether it was from being remote or just from having such a disjointed, you know, year, whether it be this year, last year, or year before. You know, if you think about it, we have students in the building that have never, you know, they're sophomores and freshmen that have never experienced a normal New York high school. And so, you know, we feel that those academic labs, which are essentially allow teachers to work with smaller groups of students. They're not courses. They're really like a study hall that allows teachers to provide more individualized and directed assistance. Challenges, when you pull teachers out of what their typical duties would be, which is study halls, to provide an additional or a greater number of smaller group academic labs to provide that support, you need to make up on the backend the study halls that we lost. And so, um, we have two study hall monitors that basically are not teachers. They're, um, non-certified staff that, that are there to supervise study halls and help us there so that we can provide the additional support to students. The, the last bullet there, the three parent professionals, um, are requested through the special ed program, and those are, are students to serve. So they are there to provide support to specific students. So those weren't necessarily grant funded programs. Those are programs that the department determined that are necessary in order to provide a program for students with I T's and specialized instruction needs. The, um, in terms of, of kind of moving away from the specific academic and providing welcoming, accepting, well-maintained, accessible, and safe school facility, some of you may remember that we were probably overly optimistic at the time, but, um, this time last year, we reduced a, the nurses' administrative assistant at the high school. It's a part-time position, a little over half-time. And we did so because we, we, under normal circumstances, we haven't needed it. And we thought our L P N was going to fill in that gap. Well, what we thought and what we were hit with, two totally different things. And as you can imagine, the nurse's office has probably been hurt more so in terms of the increased demands in almost any other part of the district. And we found that our L P N really was being drawn and being pulled between the two schools much more than what anticipated and what was needed. And so therefore, um, this year, we, um, covered the cost of the nurses' administrative assistant at the high school through one of the grants. We anticipate we probably need it for at least one more year. And I'm going to stop making predictions about what things are going to look like related to health and COVID, but, you know, at, at, at least one more year, we anticipate that that's going to be something that, that's still going to be a necessity. The middle school has a team leader for each of their teams, whereas, you know, the district has a department coordinators, which are department-specific, also studies English. The team leaders really work with the entire, you know, team of teachers, including social studies staff and science teachers. The one group that didn't have a, a team leader at the middle school was our school counseling team. And, um, we really feel that particularly now, we find out how critical it is to make sure that our school counseling team is, has the time and leadership necessary to stay on top of the needs of our students, both academically and socially emotional. So we feel that that's an important piece to, um, to be improved. The next slide looks at savings that we're suggesting. The first one, I know the board is, has received some feedback on the first position. This is the career technical education C T E teacher. Specifically, this was devoted to the family of the early childhood education courses. And just maybe to, to give you a little background on that. When we moved into this building in two thousand and three, one of the benefits and one of the long-range plans was to provide a preschool program. One, because the, the house needed additional preschool program. And due to our partnership with A H M, we were the perfect spot for it. And I think each of the schools have, like, although I know Hebrew has them, you know, so there are preschool programs in the district. But, um, so we started with our preschool here. And that allowed us to, to expand our, um, academic programming. And we were able to add early childhood to our C T E program that allowed us to essentially kind of, our students could use the preschool as, as a lab and a workshop to, you know, to hone their skills and enhance their knowledge. When, when we did that, we were at an enrollment of about twelve hundred students. You know, we've got eight hundred back, so we, you know, we have four hundred additional students in the building. One of the challenges that we've had with our family and consumer science-related programs, so foods would have been example, I don't know if any of you guys took foods, but that was a very popular course. We have both commercial kitchen and a, um, just a group of typical kitchens. So, you know, we had a commercial foods program, and then we had a regular, you know, food program that for those not necessarily interested in restaurant work. And then we had the early childhood program. What we discovered is that there really are no more training programs for family and consumer science. So people aren't coming out of college with that certification anymore. And when our foods teacher retired, we simply weren't able to buy anybody with a certification. And unfortunately, with, with the way certification works, the state one won't allow you to hire somebody that doesn't have a proper certification. If you somehow did hire somebody without a proper certification, you're not eligible for teacher retirement, and you create all sorts of messes. And so you don't have a lot of flexibility for problem solving in most cases. So we, we found that we had to eliminate the foods program at that point. We had a teacher that continued, one teacher now, so we had two. One's taught open foods, and then we had one that taught foods and, um, early childhood. As that teacher that remained edged towards retirement, they ended up reducing their course loads and only teaching Point Four, which is essentially two courses a year in early childhood. When they retired, we struggled mightily to find anybody who was, um, certified. We weren't able to find one individual, um, but, you know, they found that there were other opportunities that they wished to proceed, so, or pursue. So we have not been running a family and consumer science program this year because we simply could not buy anybody with a proper certification. And to keep it in the, um, and you take programs out of your program studies, and then you try to put them back in, you create other possibly unanticipated problems. So if we were to say, you know what, we're, we're going to do whatever we can, and we're going to make sure we get this, this program, as our enrollment edges down, you run the risk of adding a program back in, but then taking students from other areas, in which case you may not be able to run another program which is as dear to their heart, you know, to some students as early childhood was. So it really put us in a conundrum of a program we would love more than anything to continue. It was a very well regarded and, you know, well-enrolled program. And we had the, we had the preschool here to help support it. But because, again, because of the fact that we simply don't have the applicants to fill it, and we're concerned that should we fill it, you know, hold off and fill it later on, we may inadvertently find that we're pulling kids away from a hundred programs and then having to cut other teachers and create some challenges down that road. So, um, so the reason why I kind of said it a couple of slides ago, if you remember the Point Four or the Wellness for P E and Health. So what we're proposing here is that we essentially, we're not adding for, you know, overall, you're not going to see any overall negative or plus to teaching positions. It's a flat budget request because we're proposing reducing C T E by Point Four and increasing P E and Health by Point Four, sort of kind of the Washington. Allows us to, me, to address the request of students in the area of P E and Health. And we already have, you know, we're able to distribute the students at that point, um, would have taken the early childhood. We do have quite an emphasis in psychology in our social studies department. So we do have other psychology venues of students to take advantage of. It's unfortunate, though, that early childhood is not a course that can be taught in the social studies department. You have to have family and consumer science certification to teach that specific course. This isn't a teaching position, but, um, we have budgeted this year a district services technician. This is a half-time I T support position. We have not been able to fill this position either. I T, um, support staff are, are in high demand and short supply. We have found that we've been able to meet the needs of our students and our staff in I T, and so we don't believe that we need this position anymore. So we're not replacing them anything. We feel that we, um, our current staff is able to meet, um, our I T needs. The third bullet, um, has, has no impact whatsoever on the budget, but I felt it was important to at least make everyone aware of it. Last year, Last year, we reduced an English position because enrollment allowed us to do that and it makes sense. With COVID hitting us and realizing that students, in particularly with reading and writing, was a tough area, we used grant funds to continue to support that program. So it didn't cost us anything, but it allowed us to keep the position so that we could teach our, keep our reading and writing courses at lower enrollments, provide more directed assistance to our students. The grant is, is, has brought its course and we don't, we believe that being where we are now, that we don't need that position. So we're not adding it back in. It's listed as a negative F T E, but doesn't show up in the budget because of this grant. And the next slide really, you know, just gives you a, a sense of where we've been over the last, since two thousand and eighteen in terms of reducing F T Es. And I think Ram, you know, I, I often hear from folks, you know, you should be cutting more teachers and you should be, as enrollment decreases. And I guess this slide, in some cases says, yeah, we don't disagree with that. I think we're very measured and thoughtful about how we do it. But you can see that in two thousand and two, which was a significant drop in enrollment, we had eleven, uh, one teachers. And then each year since, we've had, you know, three point two, one point five and two last year. Not, no recommendations to reduce staffing anymore at this point because of the minimal decrease. But, so we do, I, I want to make sure that folks know that we're not just trying to keep things the way they are, to keep things the way they are. We really have been very thoughtful, I think, and measured up. In terms of some of the, the specific areas that I think have some of the biggest impacts on, on the budget, one is certainly technology. Scott Buntson will be with us next week and be happy to be able to answer questions probably more depth than I may be able to. But you'll notice here, there are a number of software packages that we're adding, much of it to support our technology infrastructure. J A M is a web-based centralized control for our Apple products. We have firewall add-on. Schoology helps teachers and students to manage coursework and assignments. So it's a kind of a, certainly a teaching aid there. And Google Enterprise provides us with enhanced resources for our Google universe. We, um, when you look at the, the full budget book, you're going to see a table with lease packages. And one of the, well, a goal that the board has had and the district has had for quite a few years has been to kind of find that sweet spot of funding technology so that we're not increasing it one year and decreasing it the next and having an even bigger increase in volume. And the goal was to, you know, hit a sixty thousand dollar threshold to adequately provide refreshed laptops and the technology that basically makes us run. This year puts us at that point where we want to be, but it means that we're going from a funding boost of about forty thousand last year to sixty thousand this year. So it does bump it up, but then we don't have any increases moving forward beyond it stays at the flat six thousand rate. Some of the, the bigger expenses coming out of that are the seventh and tenth grade Chromebooks will need to be replaced at a hundred and twenty-four thousand. And we're beginning the process of changing out the smart boards, which you can see in the back of the room there, you can see the projector on top. Those will all install in two thousand and three and many of them are either not working or they're, yeah, they're very much obsolete. So we're in the process of, of training those out to interactive boards. And next one here, in special education. I'm going to be talking a few slides later about some of the savings in special ed, but you know, we are seeing some increased magnet school tuition, the W A G tuition that wasn't originally planned for. As you can imagine, when a student goes into the district, they're already in a program or we find that they need an additional program that provides services beyond what we can. We can't always predict when those students are going to arrive or what their needs might be. So, you know, until they're milked here, we don't really know where they may end up. In terms of private tuition and professional services, we have three students who are currently attending out-of-district programs that will be moving into more expensive programs. We have an incoming seventh grader who already attends an out-of-district program. And three students that are currently in Ram and that they will then be moving into a postgraduate program. So students can remain with us until their second birthday. So even when they finish year Ram, they move on to transition programs. And then there's a, a slight increase in assessment and supplies in, in some of the software packages. And the facilities, well, if you, you have lent even half an ear to the news, you know that prices are going up all over the place. And this is a start, I think, portrait of where some of the increases in the budget are coming from. We do have to replace a portable refrigeration unit. Those also came with the, with the building that was new in two thousand and three and they're failing as well. So there's a replacement there. We have to do a software program update for H VAC repair and maintenance. It's about twelve thousand. The ever-source electronic delivery fee is, is projected to be an increase of ninety-five thousand. So there's an example right there of increasing costs. We have some equipment, a washer and dryer, the middle school P E department, some of the acid cabinets in the high school science department, a new soundboard in the auditorium and A D D enclosures of our athletic fields for a proposal of about ten thousand dollars. We have an increase in natural gas supplies. And we're proposing adding a remote access door to the English wing. For those of you who can imagine kind of coming in the main entrance for the high school and walking under the overhead, there's a door kind of halfway through that goes into English wing. It's one of the few outside doors that doesn't have to be popped. And we have a lot of classes that don't, you know, that use outside. They certainly in the last few years have been using that entrance area for holding their classes. And so, you know, whenever you have a door that gets used for safety purposes, you want to make sure that you avoid anyone tempted to sort of go stung, keep it open or do anything else. And so, you know, when it's getting used, it's safest to put a pop there so that teachers can bring their classes inside that. Sure.
Are these numbers, like in addition to the typical electric budget, typical maintenance equipment budget? Or is this what proposed budget for those line items is going?
That's a great question.
If those were incorporated, maybe president and there was a strong delta cost.
But they're not just the change cost, they're the actual budget that I, yes. And the next, so, so the next slide, really, and I, I think this is, this is kind of where ultimately the big question is, so what, what am I proposing? Am I proposing an increase or a decrease? And you can see here in this budget overview, this breaks out our, basically a budget into the five or six major categories. So certainly the biggest category is salaries. And our salaries are anticipated to go up seven point eight percent this year. If you remember, um, when we negotiated our last few contracts, we knew that Ram paid significantly lower than surrounding areas. And so the negotiations committee of the board, we were able to coordinate a year that had higher increases than others into this upcoming year knowing that we were trying to coordinate it with a year that looked like it was going to have people easier to absorb some of those increases. The benefits also go up likewise. Purchased services, you're going to see a decrease there. So any of those red numbers are areas of decrease. I'm going to be going through each one of these in just a minute. Our tuition in-state, we see a fairly significant decrease in that. Our supplies have increased, but then property and some of those other areas have decreased as well. So let's go through each one of those, I'll do those briefly just so you can get a sense of, you know, what is, what, where are the increases in the budget and where are the decreases? Certainly salaries are probably the largest source of increase. For purchased services, we have a seventy thousand dollar decrease and that's because we're budgeting less for pupil transportation is, is our morning and afternoon bus routes. Our special ed, our V O A G and our athletic transportation. We, we've decreased those, we feel that we can decrease in those areas. Printing and binding has been decreasing heavily. Our electric pair maintenance supply has been decreased. And up to this year, we budgeted for three custodial temps because we had so many custodians coming and going, particularly with some getting sick and with COVID. We've eliminated those three temps from the budget and instead added one custodial position to our existing custodians. So that allows us to save significant amount of money, but also we felt be a more responsible way of people supporting the staffing for custodians. The tuition in-state and out-of-state here again, you know, the special education department did a lot of fine detail work and were able to decrease our tuition fairly significantly. And these are based on real students, so this is not something we're just projecting, but in looking at how we can address the needs of our kids. This allows us to decrease that. In terms of supplies, we are seeing increases in electricity, in diesel fuel. Career and technical education, I'm not picking on one department, but this is a department that does metals. This is a department that does a lot of heavy supply-based work. And so as they are rushing back to normal, there, there's a, you know, an increase in, in supplies by price. In terms of, of property, in distant property includes the equipment, the stuff that we buy. And we've eliminated the types of furniture that we might have typically purchased. Equipment for our I T department, equipment for art, science, P E. And it doesn't mean that we're not buying anything. It may be that last year we were able to get, you know, purchases, but we just don't feel like, you know, we need it this year. So we're able to experience some savings in that way. And the next one is, this is the big one. Under other, this includes the principal and interest payments for the school building. So our, we have a decrease of one point four million in principal and interest pay. So this line item decreases accordingly. Yep.
If that one is being fulfilled, why isn't it minus one?
Because it's still, it, it, it's not, there's still, we still have about five years left of it. So it went from, um, yeah, exactly. And it's going to stay flat for another year. And then it'll grow, six hundred thousand and stay flat.
And it's all the same amount?
Yes, yes. Yep, and that's, that's all laid out from the beginning. Yeah. So to, to bring it all together, what does this look like as far as, as the overall operating budget? So the overall operating budget is a decrease of one point four six percent. So we're coming in with a decrease of four hundred and fifty-four thousand for a one point four six percent decrease. However, it doesn't stop there because you'll see that long list of anticipated revenues. So this is where we have funds coming into the district. And if you calculate the projected increase in funding, we're presenting a operating budget. This is just the operating budget, an operating budget change of negative one point seven percent. So coming in at five hundred and eighteen thousand, that's twenty-six dollars less than what we have pledged with this. And I think it's important to note that, you know, there, there may be an assumption that, well, your bonding is going down by one point four million, so why isn't your decrease here going down by one point four million? It's going down by one point seven percent because we have salary increases, we have the supply increases. And so there are increases that are, are negating some of that decrease that we might like to see. But, you know, I, I think, again, this is a reasonable balance. The next slide is our capital improvement budget. And I'm going to now kind of shift gears a little bit. So the operating budget that we just talked about really just talks about running the schools, keeping buses running, keeping students in the classrooms educated and making it all work. The capital improvement budget looks at the big capital items, replacing boilers, replacing refrigerators, replacing floors, replacing roofs. All those things that you need to do to keep your structures and your fields and grounds up and running. Let, this current year, we're working with a capital budget of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Proposing a hefty increase, so we are looking at five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, which is an increase of two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And that's not random. The facilities subcommittee that was and that had worked over the last, you know, it was really kind of similar makeup for quite a while. The goal had always been to get to about a five hundred thousand dollar capital budget. Again, very much like our tech leases, wouldn't have to gain an increase year by year. So you can have just a stable funding without increases from year to year. This obviously brings it, brings us to that, that figure. I, I think I'm, I'm safe in proposing this because of the savings in the operating budget. You know, this is pretty scary to look at and say, well, you've got seventy-four percent increase versus a one point seven percent decrease in the other budget. Like this is huge. But keep in mind that this is tiny compared to the twenty-nine million dollar operating budget. And so when you look at, when you put them all together, the overall capital and operating put together is still, comes in at a negative, comes in at a negative point nine eight percent. So let me talk a little more about capital. So with capital, the board has a lot of options there. I'm, my, my proposal is one way to go, but there are a lot of options that the board has. And I think that capital is going to be a topic that we're going to spend, you know, some really quality time on to, to be right. So I'm, I'm proposing that, well, I'm not proposing, there are three pots of money related to capital that the board is going to have some decisions to make regarding. So the first one is mine proposed for the capital budget, five hundred and twenty-two thousand. And in that capital budget that I'm proposing, the five hundred and twenty-two thousand, you're going to see in the budget book. So I lay out exactly what it is that we're projecting. So, I lay out exactly what it is that we're projecting. Flooring in the kitchen, replacing refrigerators, some concrete work. So, the facilities subcommittee reviewed our proposals and, you know, I think we all agree that, you know, these are all worthy projects that really need to be done. You also have, as we speak, 229,000 sitting in our capital improvement plan and our capital non-recurring. So, these are, this is money that's either leftover from projects that were completed, coming in under budget. So, there is still money leftover that stayed, that remains in capital. And it also includes projects that were put on hold. So, the drainage for the competition field, drainage for tear for the baseball field. We put those on hold as we pursue the term question. So, we've got 229,000 that's existing in capital now that you, as a board, have some decisions to make. And certainly the facilities subcommittee will be looking carefully at it and will make some modifications too. The third pot of money is nebulous right now. I can't make any promises to you what that amount's going to be. But what I can tell you is that any surplus from the 2021 budget year will need to be audited, and that audit usually finishes up in about March. State law allows a board, a regional board event, to use an amount equal to 2% of that year's budget to earmark for capital budgets. So, you have the potential of up to 622,000 also that the board may, may be able to use. Now, you may not, the surplus may not equate to 622,000, maybe less than. It might be more than that. If it's more than that, let's say it's a million dollars. You don't get to keep the million dollars. You can only keep 622,000 other than capital for capital projects. The rest of it would go back to the towns. Okay, so there's three pots that you have to play with. If you look at the next slide. Sure, yep.
I think you were saying about this. The difference between the capital improvement plan and the capital non-recurring.
So, the capital non-recurring, and you got, correct me if I'm missing anything, but the capital non-recurring includes projects that had been completed and monies that had been audited from other projects that gets carried over from year to year. The capital improvement plan is from the last year's, or the previous year's of 2021. No, no, 1920 year. Definitely, but yeah. That was, that was, and that's where the projects that were put on hold is.
And it all carries over.
It all carries over, yes, exactly.
So, there are two different pots of money. The capital non-recurring is prior to the past, you know, it's always been a 1% over. So, this year, the year that finished, not the year that we're at, the year that finished, um, we get to carry 2% over for capital non-recurring projects. And that's where that automatic was briefly funded from. The capital improvement is based on, is like a process in that area for them.
So, so you could have the 2% over each year and use it in the future as you see.
Exactly, right, right, right. And that's a perfect segue. So, here, here's some of the options that you have. For the, for what I propose, the 522,000 plus the existing capital, the 200,000 that's available to you. You know, you, you can fund, my prioritized capital projects with the capital budget and use existing funds to fund some of the capital budgets in order to reduce the proposed capital budget. So, if the board feels that 522,000 is just too much in one year, you can use some of the capital non-recurring budget to pay for some of those projects and reduce that overall increase in the capital budget. So, that would be one option you'd have to play with both pots of money and reduce my proposed. The only caution I would throw is that if you reduce it, then as your capital needs continue to pile up, you may find that you're increasing it more each year as opposed to, you know, getting to a 5%. Second bullet, you could fund additional capital budgets that I've not included in my proposal. And the facility subcommittee looked at almost a million or over a million dollars with the projects. And the ones that we have here, the ones that prioritize, but there are others that may be just as worthy. And then use that money to fund necessary field, athletic field repairs and improvements. So, those athletic field challenges haven't gone away. Obviously, just the solution that we put in place is going to have to be different than what we had hoped. The next piece is you've got that audited surplus from last year. And again, this, this could be as, as high as 622,000. With that surplus money, if you're, if it comes up into that range, I think that we'd have enough to take care of all of the necessary athletic field repairs. And so, you know, my, my suggestion would be to fund the capital this year, which doesn't include any athletic works, but look at that surplus and possibly any of the capital non-recurring to cover. I'm not saying go out on my turf, but I'm suggesting do the drainage, replace the trap. I think you could do most of that necessary work with those funds.
Scott, can I just ask a question about the surplus? I thought we only could keep 1% of the surplus and the rest had to go back.
They changed that soon, so that beginning this year, it was increased to 2%.
Okay.
You're correct that when, when the legislature kind of created the ability for school districts to carry surpluses, they allowed districts, school districts, this range of school districts to carry 2%, but limited regional districts to 1%. They fixed that, that imbalance with this past session. So, we can now carry over 2%.
Okay, thank you, good to know.
The other, so the next budget too, is that, you know, I think one of the conversations we will need to have is looking ahead and possibly creating some long-term saving items. Because we know that we're going to have some hefty projects like roof replacement, replacing the boilers, replacing the chillers. Those are, those are, those are really not projects, you know, those are, those are expensive projects. You're not going to be able to save enough each year to get that. So, there will be some bonding, but you may be able to save enough to decrease the budget in some way. So, that's a piece. And I, I can't not also suggest that you could also return it to the towns, which is what we did last year. Last year, when we were, everyone was uncertain of where we were going economically. We had a lot of lengthy conversations with the three towns. And rather than holding on to the, what last year, the 1%, we gave it all back. We took 400,000 back to the towns. With the conversation that next year, the hope is that we'd be able to use some, you know, use that money towards the district. So, I think the towns would be open to those continuing discussions, but I can't discount. Sue brought a really good point, you know? It used to be that we carried over 1%. You know, it doesn't lock you in to using that money for your capital projects. That's what you can use it for, but you can return to the towns as well.
Keep possible partial.
Absolutely, yep, yep. Yep, so, I know I'm throwing a lot of different scenarios out there. But I do believe that with a reasonable capital budget this year, with the money that's currently in the capital fund and with the anticipation of surplus funds, that we can take care of a lot of the, you know, requirements, whether they be athletic fields, whether they be the necessary repairs that we need to go. So, I'm optimistic that although it's a huge challenge, we're in a nice spot right now. It's a great opportunity. And this, this, this is my last slide. This just gives you an overview of where we've been over the last six years in terms of increases and decreases. You know, I think that 2.78, 2.89 probably are pretty representative of most districts of, you know, given a typical year. You know, we have been able to come in with some, a couple of years a little lower than that, the 1.76, the 1.67. And then certainly we've been able to come in with some negative years. And yet, the overall proposal that the board is presenting tonight is comes in at negative. So, I know I just threw a lot of what really is a general overview. I think most of your questions have probably either hopefully been answered in this book, but also come out of reviewing the book. So, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you have right now. Because we're, you know, our schedule is to meet at least for the next four to five weeks. What I would ask is if, if you could forward any questions to Eve and I by Wednesday, that would give us at least, you know, a couple of days to make sure we have all the information you may need. So, please feel free to email myself with any questions that you have as you go through this. And we'll make sure that we have those answers for you. But certainly, if you have some questions during the days as well, anything that you think might need some preparation. Do you get any questions to us by Wednesday? Wednesday is a treat, I think. So, I'm happy to entertain any questions. I think you could probably take the screen down so we can see the post. Thanks, Eric.
Oh, Scott. As an example, there was flooring in the kitchen, there's a carpet. And there could be equipment in the kitchen, it's under administrative. So, what, what tips something over from administrative?
So, in theory, a capital project is anything above a ten dollar threshold. When it comes to the food service portion, we tend to use the operating budget to support the food service portion in terms of going to building everything into capital. It's just, it's what's unused that we all have to happen in capital and still debated, I guess, or needs to be ironed out between the director for building stuff that is really had to be done and those that we put into operating in it now.
Okay, okay. And there's 124 pages of that. How is, what's, what's the logic there?
So, that's the reasoning. And so, Scott, from that way up, it's just a little bit better. So, every, so every, so every third year, students get new home books to replace. So, that everyone has a one on one technology to replace. If we're going to require that of our students, we have to really tend to support the students having digital technologies. Do I believe that the dangers get removed?
No, I think it's the seventh graders and the fifth graders.
Yeah, and so, and so what's going on there is that's, that's not considered capital because it's a deed?
No.
Any other questions for Scott at this point?
Great, well, thank you for your attention. Sorry for paddling on for so long. There's a lot of information there, so. And again, open up to any questions. I know there's a lot, you know, we live it, so, you know, we, we assume that some things might be more obvious than they are. Feel free to reach out and solicit questions.
Great, okay. Thank you, Scott, appreciate that. You also want to carry over in talking about setting the 2022 high school graduation date?
Sure, and I'm just sorry that Lily's not here. Although based upon what Lily said, I'm thinking maybe we should set the graduation date till Friday. So, historically, school districts were required to wait until April 1st to set the graduation date. And what that means by setting the graduation date, it means that a board of education can designate a date that seniors will graduate. And should there be any further snow days or disruptions, the seniors don't have to make up those days. Everybody else does. Seven, eight, like, what barriers do have to continue to pass. And the state, you know, rightly so, decided that well, April 1st is a good time because what's the chance of having snow days after April? But it is close enough to the end of the school year where it makes sense. Well, and that worked first for a while, but graduations have become more involved. They involve a greater reliance on rented chairs and rented stages and rented equipment, rented sound systems. Some districts rent facilities, and they might hold their graduation at the bush wall or other theater-type areas. And what we found is, and well, then you had also the added burden of our project graduation committee, which schedules the after-graduation party, which typically involves a area where you booked, you have to make reservations. And as graduation dates move, it, every, you know, each, each snow day puts us into a panic. You know, are we going to be able to still rent the stage on that day? Are we going to be able to rent the hall? You know, we do rent halls to do that. And certainly for project graduation, we've actually had years where they've had to change venues because whatever venue they were originally hoping for wasn't available on our new graduation day. So, in response to that, in 2019, the state allows the Board of Educations to set the graduation date for seniors at any time during the school year. Some school districts, Glassbury, for example, sets their senior graduation date at their first boarding in September. I mean, Glassbury's a huge district. Setting a graduation is a, I'm sure, monument of the past, and they have a lot of people thinking about traveling and... So, you know, for them, I think it makes sense. I think for us, it's probably a little too early to, because we still have, you know, some snow days that we can, it's going to happen. So, I would argue that right now in January, with two snow days under our belt, is, is probably as good a time as any to set graduation. And what, what we have to do, the only option you have is to set graduation on the 180th day from the beginning of the school year. And right now, that's June 15th. So, you don't have any more flexibility other than, you can't decide, well, I'd rather graduate on 16th or 17th or 13th or 17th. You can choose on the 180th day from when we start in school, because we've had two snow days. That puts us at the 15th. What that would allow us to do if we set graduation tonight, and it allows families to make travel preparations, you know, fly people around the country. It allows us to lock in our stage rental, our chair rental, our sound system rental. What else? We must run something else. You seem to have a lot of things for graduation. And then it allows our project graduation to nail down, you know, the venue for project graduation. You know, the risk we take is that our seniors may miss out on a few days of school.
I'm sure the lead is.
So, I, I think.
The half day right now is the 15th.
Yes.
Who's noticed, right?
Correct, right.
And that's a half day for, for, right?
Well, the, yes, the last couple of days are half days. Yeah, they're half days, well.
They wouldn't be if we could be full up.
Well.
They would have to be after.
Yeah, we'd have to. So, this is the year that we're not doing midterms and finals. But typically, when we do mid, so next year, we'll have midterms and finals again. The last four days of the first semester and the last four days of the second semester are half days. You have the two-hour exams and... You have the two hour exams and plus having midterm and final schedule allowed us the time necessary for rehearsal for graduation. Last year, although we didn't have midterms and finals, we had half days on those last couple of days so that our seniors could practice graduation. You'll see that there are half days on this year's schedule as well. If in fact we set graduation at the 15th tonight and we have X number of snow days, I imagine that Dr. Frisk will request that, you know, could we keep those two days as half days so that our seniors could practice, you know, with graduations on? That would, I agree that that would be a reasonable request.
So the 15th, wouldn't be a half day anymore or what do you think?
Correct.
So is there any discussion that we need to have? Is there anybody who needs to vote on this?
Well, I'll make a motion, I guess. I'll make a motion to set the high school graduation date to June 15th.
Great, seconded by, I'm sorry, is that Lori?
Yes, Lori, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that being said, let's roll call. So the.
Could I just say this, please? For Kevin and Adrian, are graduations typically done in the middle of the week?
Ours are always done on the last day of school. So, so they are. They're more than likely, yes. Having said that, there are some districts that like always do their graduation on Saturdays. And they always do it on, you know, a Friday night, whatever it might be. And we've never, we've always done on the last day of school.
No one's going to be a fan of shit.
Oh, no, no.
Eric, I can give a question. So if we do have more snow days, does that mean everybody except the seniors would come on the 16th and 17th?
Correct.
And do we foresee for families that have siblings, that have family that might be coming in, that that might be in attendance? Issue or concern?
I would hope not. I mean, I would hope that they see the value of having this. I think the seniors have a lock on senior days. So I'm hoping that our committee clause can express that as an answer.
All right, so just to reiterate, Sue Stolpe made a proposal that we set the RAN graduation date for June 15th, which is a Wednesday, 2022. And Lori seconded it. We'll go through a roll call vote. Lori?
Yes.
Mike, Jerome?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary? Joe?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Judy, not sure if she joined us. Jessica, I'm not sure. Oh yeah, Jessica. Carrie? And then Mike Morris, oh yes. So we just have it and we'll set the June 15th as the date for graduation.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. The next item on the new business agenda was a discussion and possible action on modified the Board of Education regular meeting schedule. So look, I want to be, I'll throw it out there, full disclosure. I asked Scott to add this to the agenda for two reasons. First, kind of adopted the schedule that's been ongoing and kind of carry over from previous boards. And so having not had this group actually ever really discussed it in detail, I thought it was at least worth that discussion. The second part of that full disclosure is Monday couldn't be the worst night for Mike Morris on the planet to have a meeting. Now, that being said, I don't want to ask anybody to expect that I, you know, and expecting that anybody would change or that we would change this purely because it's not, you know, the best circumstance for me. But I thought, as I was trying to work my schedule around it, I thought it was at least worth the discussion to find out if this was an issue for other people on the board and if there was something that we wanted to do different about it, then at least have a discussion. So that being said, I guess I'll just throw it out there. You know, is this a good night that is best for everybody in order to get the most participation? Or is there, are there better nights? I mean, what's the temperature of the board on that discussion? Sue?
So I'd also, while we're discussing this as well, August 15th was one of the dates also on the schedule. And I must have missed the meeting where we discussed this and proved this. But August 15th is really dead smack in the middle of August. Folks still may be on vacation. So I always like considering moving that to the following week. So it's not right in the middle of vacation week. Or vacation time, summer vacation time. So that's just another input. And as to your request on the Monday, I have another board meeting on Thursdays. So if we were going to change, I wouldn't, I would be okay with entertaining possibly Tuesday. But I would hate to have back to back to back meetings like Wednesday, Thursday. But I could consider Tuesdays. I don't believe I have much on Tuesdays right now.
Okay. Anybody else thoughts on this?
I have a super packed meeting schedule. For me, moving it from Monday would be changing around my soccer season, best ball against spring. And it could impact my ability to get here on time and most likely not be in person. But if that, if, you know, if that ends up being what people would prefer, then I can do that. Just have to understand that that would be hard for me to work around the four months and then eight months through June. Would be really difficult for me to work around that.
Okay. That's fair, anybody else? For or against? Against questions, Monday's good, not good?
Mondays and Tuesdays are good for me. Makes the decision easier for the balance of the board.
Okay, that's helpful. Eric, Gabriel, you guys?
I think Monday or Tuesday is fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah, Monday and Tuesdays are fine.
Okay. What about you, Mary or Joe or?
I'm pretty open. Obviously I'd say I wouldn't do Fridays, but college is a big day.
I'm flexible for Monday or Tuesday as well.
Great, great, okay. Look, I guess what I'd like to do then, maybe I would propose kind of a hybrid. I don't want to, you know, I think everybody kind of knew the Monday nights were going to be the, kind of the standard Monday nights for the regular RAN board meetings. But maybe what if we were to take these subsequent budget workshops that we right now have loaded up for every Monday between now and the, give me Scott, but I think it seems like 10 years from now. And what if we were to have just the board meetings continue to meet on the Monday nights, but then move the budget workshops to the Tuesday nights, which would give us an opportunity, maybe as disruptive to you Lori, but maybe gives us a little bit of a break on Monday nights for the extra meetings.
Yeah, I mean, that works for me and again, you know, I don't want to not be the flexible, the flexible one.
I think you're being respectful.
So Tuesdays are good until then for me. But yeah, I think that's a great idea.
All right, so is there any other thoughts or input on that? Otherwise I'm just gonna, I'm gonna make a motion.
I can tell you Mike that I polled our coordinators and Tuesday was the night they could do it. I think Wednesdays, Thursdays, they worked a bit harder. So I think Tuesday, I think everyone that needs to be there will be able to attend. So that shouldn't be a problem for us.
Just to make sure everybody knows I'm not the least considerate person on the planet. I did actually ask Scott that question. But before I ever even asked to add it to the agenda, it wasn't going to work for the administration, then it really didn't matter one bit at all. I did ask the proposal, but thank you for bringing that up, Mike. Appreciate that. All right, so if that's the case, then what I would ask is there proposed that we, well, actually before we do any proposals, maybe let's discuss Sue's point about August 15th because I happen to agree. I think it's the worst time, you know, those summer few months are, it's tough to put something in the middle of it and expect that we're going to get a lot of participation. If it's not, if it's not terribly inconvenient for anybody, I certainly would support pushing that meeting back to the next meeting.
The 22nd would probably be just fine. I don't see any problems with that. We'll have new teacher orientation that week, but that doesn't start until I think Tuesdays. And our staff will be in on the 30th.
Yeah, there's still another.
Right, right, right. So yeah, so that, I think that works.
Okay. All right, so if that's the case, then what I would like to do is make a proposal or make a motion that we continue to have the standard scheduled Board of Education monthly meetings on the Monday night, but then move all of the additional budget workshop or any subsequent additional meetings that might support other effort to Tuesday nights. We'll leave it up to Scott to, you know, propose those dates as necessary. And then also one step further to move the last meeting, that meeting in August, back to the following Monday, which is August 22nd.
Submit.
All right. Uh, Keith? Let's go ahead and vote on that real quick. Lori?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
And just in case they joined us, Carrie? Jessica? Or Judy? All right, and I vote yes as well. All right, so that motion carries. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your flexibility and trying to work out the best circumstance. Because at the end of the day, I'd love to make sure that we have as many people that can participate as possible. So thank you very much for that flexibility.
Great. So then, Mike, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, February 1st. That'll be our first budget workshop.
Yep. Maybe if you could, Scott, just update that line and maybe pass it around so we all have that updated schedule?
Absolutely, we'll update, we'll get plenty of messages around. And I'm working under the assumption that our budget workshops will continue at 6:30 and they'll still be hybrid so that anyone who wants to present can be, anyone who wants to participate in the moment will be able to.
Scott, one step further, are those going to be recorded that we can access them to? Because I'm sure, especially with the workshops, that if certain people can't participate, that still want to be able to watch the presentations.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll record every, any board meetings people want to record.
I have a quick comment to make. Can someone check what day of the week February 15th is?
February 15th is a Tuesday.
Under committee reports, it just says the policy committee XP is scheduled for February 15th.
Right.
So I just want to figure out what we're going to do with that.
What I'll have to do is I'll look at the other, the subcommittee meetings and then reach out to the ed of the committees and we'll have to reschedule some of those meetings, yeah. So I think that probably may be the only one, but yeah, I'll reschedule that.
Great, thank you, Gabriel. Appreciate you catching that.
And just, Scott, just so you know, sometimes we just end up just canceling them as well if they're not needed because we're so busy during budget season. So you need to keep that in mind as well.
Yep.
Amen.
Thank you.
Got a lot of love on that one, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did. Okay, that being said, why don't we move on to financials, Scott?
All right, so in your packet on the 10.4A, that is where we expect our revenue report as of December 31st of 2021. There's a projected net favorable position of $134,281. As for revenue, the state is statutorily required to provide the district's first payment of 75% for active cost entitlement. So that's for our high-cost specialized students. So we're planning on receiving that funding on February 28th of 2022. So it won't be in time for the next board meeting. But hopefully we get what we're anticipating. We've been lucky and been doing this so far. Expenditures, the departments are spending down their funds of plan. There have been challenges due to inflation and the supply chain issues. So transfers are requested and completed and the board will be taking action on those as soon as possible. There's no significant changes for the capital equipment fund or the non-returning capital return fund. We're still awaiting any word of official closure or audit by the state community department. And people services, these are first orders. As any outward changes happen to the individual, a national program or ITC meetings take place. It's daily, it seems like, and very often throughout the day. So are there any questions that I can help answer based on the information that I presented?
Good shape. Good shape.
Yeah, we're feeling, yeah, we're feeling really well. Know we do better. Not the way. All right. That was the expenditure report. On 10.4B, we have this student activity report. And basically again, that's just an overview of the funds that students and or the school have set aside, book clubs and other activities. The balance matches the bank account, so we don't have any concerns there. There are no overages to report. Everybody is in good shape there also. So if there are any questions on that, I'll be happy to answer any of them. There are none. 10.4C, which is the food service report, this again is through December 31st, 2021. We see that unfortunately we had a bit of a slide again. So we had a loss of about, a little under $10,000 for the month of December. I'm hoping and still being hopeful that as school continues and the food continues to be as good as it is and the students still get excited about the food that we will still, we will finish there for the evening and hopefully try to negate some of our loss. There is still rumor being had that both the federal government and the state government are trying to work out a way for this, what we're currently in is called the seasonal summer operations. We do not charge the students for meals, their actual meal. The concern is now that there's been two years of not charging families for food, they're afraid that the balances, that we'll not be able to collect money or that there'll be more need. And they don't want the shame of somebody not being able to pay a bill or not having the money to come out and even change. Not that that's happened here, but that's a decent strategy. And that would get in the future that students get that appropriately without having to worry about anything. So hopefully the federal government and the state government can get together and work something out and we won't have to worry about charging for future meals. But are there any questions that I can answer based on that?
I just ask, I mean, I don't think, since it's not really a problem yet, it's probably not worth spending the time of this meeting discussing it. But maybe if we do find that they don't cover it and that we do have to go back to those, to that payment collection circumstance, maybe digging into if there's any other best practices to avoid exactly all the things that you said are problems.
Yep. We can handle that for you.
All right, first.
All right, and 10.4D, these are the budget appropriation transfers that have happened. As per the board policy, this doesn't actually happen entirely, but thereabouts. So I think before everybody was elected was the last time. So this is all for, for when you come around to the board. These are all the hand actives. So we have one memo that has a cover sheet that basically. These are all the transactions. So we have a memo that has a cover sheet that basically explains each one of the transactions. And um he kind of is the transaction itself in a system, from a system printout, so you can see actually what the transaction entails. The listing of these eighteen transfers totaled out to three hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Um, some of these items basically, when it comes to personnel transfers, um there are kinds that we have staff that made a design or go on a medical leave and it is available fund. We go back to something that's called an unallocated personnel account. Um, so that's money that's available in um, I was trying to bring that up because it's everything in there. But um, so if you go back to the expenditure report of ten point four A, you'll see that the first account that's um in one of the P A personnel program expenditure report is the line that I speeded up, that's the unallocated personnel. So that's where it is available fund and salary lines, that's where we feel we will. So that's what some of those papers are, so there's not of these money available to take in other shortage areas in other areas if the need is needed. Um, so having stated that, there are eighteen transfers that will require a motion by a board member in a second so that we can um discuss them and um have the board um have action on, hopefully practically pass them, but um I haven't come across them not being moved forward. But do you want to insert, haven't answered any questions before the motion is made, or do you guys wanna move it over and after discussion?
I feel we should probably open it up for discussion first, if there is any.
Okay.
As as I recall, roughly three months ago, there was and and it was um, I don't remember the exact amount, but it was somewhere in the ballpark, over the thing like here. So that would lead me to believe that um the level of transfers is not out of the board's hands. That, you know, it's a big budget, a few hundred grand is not all money, and it's routine to uh to move things around a little bit to to make sure that everything gets fulfilled in the areas where there's surplus money, that's a good question. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
How how often do these transfers typically occur?
So.
I expect to see them in the future, actually.
Yeah, we will. So um I have to answer that question. So um, so July, August, and September, those transfers that happen, you will see that happen at a quarter board meeting. We're in January, and we're handling October, November, and December transactions. And then in March, you're gonna see January and February, and in May, you're gonna see March, April. Now, you're gonna notice that there's no month of June. Um, so I bring all June transfers or year-end transfers, does that work to refer to them as two all of them?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion points, please? Alright. That being the case, uh can I ask someone to make a motion to um accept the eighteen transfers required by action by the board mission? As proposed, for I guess the total of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred and three dollars and thirty-seven cents? Eric makes the most, Eric, or motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Mary, go second.
Hey, Mary, thank you. Let's go through and do a quick roll of vote. Uh, start with uh Sue.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh Gabriel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Uh Lori? Michael?
Yes.
Judy? Jessica? Eric? And uh Mike Morris, I vote yes. And yes is having, so that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Uh, let's see, but that being the case, committee reports, so uh at this point, turn over uh facilities.
Uh, facilities does not, has not met since the last combined meeting. Um, let's see, um, it was January sixth. So and at that time, we discussed uh the capital budget in advance of tonight's proposal from superintendent. No actions were taken at that time. I don't think if you have anything additional to add.
Okay. Uh, compliance and audit, compliance and insurance.
I think that was the joint meeting.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Anything else need to add to that, Mike?
I don't have any, no, thank you.
Okay. Uh, negotiations, no, they haven't met. Uh, policy? Our next meeting, the next meeting is on the fifteenth. I don't think there's anything that probably uh outside of that. Um, pro- uh program communication, Mary?
Yeah, we had a great meeting. Um, our only agenda item was basically looking at modifications to the twenty-two, twenty-three midterm and final exams. Um, Chris Mayer did a great presentation, um sharing the information from the school-based committee. Um, the committee consisted of members from really most departments. Um, their two main objectives were um to determine the future of midterm exams and final exams at RAM. And also, they also wanted to look at um if their exams were going to continue, um how uh, you know, what was gonna happen with the grading value, and they wanted it to be like a consistent um policy. And um they did some research and we were impressed. They went around and they basically um contacted colleges about what their practices were. They also talked to other local high schools to understand what they were doing, and then they also gathered teacher perspective to, you know, to kind of round everything out. And what they found was that most colleges are giving exams. Um, however, they did find it was um department dependent. Um, mostly the stem content areas were giving the more traditional exams. Um, in other departments, it was more like um kind of applicable assessments that would be practical in that domain, um like presentations, projects, things like that. Um, they found that local high schools, some have saved exams and others, and some of them have actually reduced their weight in their overall grade. Um, and some have moved to different types of assessments. Um, when they surveyed this brand staff, they found that eighty-five percent supported exams continuing in some form, and the majority also supported reducing the weight of the exams at RAM. Um, so basically, um what they were talking about for the twenty-two, twenty-three academic year was making the weight of those these exams about ten percent of the final grade. Um, we felt that was more equitable and that it could still demonstrate some proficiency in the course. So um, it was a really good discussion. I, the, what they're looking at for possible um alternative to the traditional like paper exam was um, you know, like if you were in a English course, maybe a Socratic seminar or a student presentation. Um, if it was a communications course, perhaps a speech or analysis of a speech, um computer science, creative programs. It was really more content piece, um showing, demonstrating their proficiency in a, you know, in applicable way to that field, so. It was really a lot of, it was a good meeting, didn't you think?
Wonderful.
And you took wonderful.
Thank you.
I'm talking about you. So it's good. I tried to make that, I tried to make that fast, so that I don't have a lot on the agenda.
Mike, I have a question just to bring, um, is that okay?
Is Mike frozen?
I'll I'll chat. I think I think he's frozen, but on the communication piece of it all, while um, you know, we are starting to prepare the budget and we have all those meetings set up for budget workshops and the public budget, i- is all that information gonna be communicated through the website, social media, emailing parents? Um, in the past, we've had budget flyers too that uh we could share with our town and community members. Is that all taking place, Scott? I'm sure you have that well under control. I just wanna ensure that you do.
Absolutely, Sue. So we'll we'll be posting it, um, everything on the website tomorrow morning under the budget. And right now, there's only one item. It's my presentation for December, but all of these items will get posted. Then I'll reach out to um the boards of finance and the select information three pounds and send them copies as well tomorrow, so get all that information out.
Yeah, and it just would be great if on like social media, we could let the communities know, you know, when we're having those budget workshops.
Yep.
And and then that, you know, that budget forum for the community members to join if they wanted to ask questions. I think that's just important to get it out there. I know there's a lot of emails coming out from the school, uh which I appreciate, very informative, so this'll just be another one added to the parents' plates.
Sure, yep. No, we'll make sure we get it out. Uh, thank you.
Thanks, I apologize. I dropped off there for a second. Um, okay, I think we left off, uh normally we would have Judy talk as far as facilitation for uh East Cohen and Kate. Uh, I don't think Judy's heard this yet. So the only thing I would say is I just wanted to take this moment, uh opportunity to thank Sue Stolfi uh and you, Scott, for coordinating with Nick Caruso to have him come do the uh legal briefing that we got, uh and kind of the, you know, kind of Kate best practices for board, new board of education members. I thought it was excellent. It was uh, it was really well uh presented. It was detailed. I think it gave us, you know, some real practical advice about how to go about doing this right and well. And uh it was also some, you know, kind of strategic type stuff about uh kind of rethinking about how we go about, how we approach what we're doing as our job uh as as board members and as a group. So again, it was, I thought it was a great opportunity. If you had a, uh, if you were able to participate, that's great. I appreciate that. And if you weren't, I do think we have that also recorded and it, I I think it's well worth your time to to watch it, especially if you're a new board member, to make sure that uh you kind of capture all the the information that Nick shared with us. Do you think you could fail step on off? I'll I'll ask Judy to follow up with everybody and just, you know, whatever coverage or any near time, future. Scott, do you think on any of that? Okay, I'm, that's a no. Scott, you have anything on Kate Rees-Camp? Do you do you have anything with them?
I I don't. No, no updates for me.
Alright, I'll so I'll just ask her to follow up with that. Alright, with that being the case, then um I'll, I guess we'll move on to the uh public comment. And Scott, do I need to read this again?
Um, no, I don't think so, Mike.
Okay. So at this point, I would just ask if there's any other additional public comment?
Um, I just want to give a shout out to um the middle school inquiry team and the council of Alicia Go, particularly, it's my son's complex. I just wanted to say that like out loud on this meeting. He broke his arm, he's on my arm Thanksgiving weekend, and it didn't even occur to me to ask for any kind of assistance in writing. Um, and Alicia contacted me and he got five oh four in place temporarily, eliminated it, and it really helped, you know, and he had expressed concern at home about how am I gonna write? How am I gonna get the exams done on time? And, you know, he's in geometry and this lot. I think they were doing proofs for what seemed like forever and, you know, all the writing and that, and, you know, he wasn't just struggling with it, but he was concerned and asked me, and I was just sort of trying to help him as a left-handed family, trying to navigate with his left hand, but, you know, it wasn't exactly the best scenario. So um I just wanted to put on record, say, say that, and Dr. Susan, they were wonderful. They reached out to me, they facilitated everything, and it was great.
Okay. Anybody uh either in the room or online that have public comment? Alright, hearing none, then I'll move on. Informational items, Scott, anything that we need to cover here?
Um, again, these each month will provide the calendar of events, so you can see what activities are scheduled in the middle and the high schools and our um student discipline statistics. So if they have any, if they have any questions.
Hey, there's no questions on informational items, then uh I would just add one one note I was remiss earlier when we were having the discussion about the uh the letter being sent to Public Health. One one uh note of thanks to Mike Jerome. He really jumped on that and very quickly took hold of the letter that I thought was uh, you know, up until they changed the all the uh the uh guidelines, uh was a super quick and very well thought out uh reaction and and uh anyway, just really appreciate how quickly you got to work on that and how thorough you were on it. Fortunately, we didn't get to use it, but I I think it bodes well for our secretary that we have that uh that level of response and expertise and we can get out those kind of things as we need. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thanks.
Um, alright, with that being the case, then I would ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move the mic to the chair and be ready.
Okay, thanks. Alright, Mike will second it. And uh why don't we do a, just a show of hands and then we'll do a voice uh for the people. So all in favor of adjournment?
Yes.
Okay, and then uh, online, Sue?
Yes.
Yep, online, Mike as well. Alright, with that being the case, then move, meeting adjourned.
Great, thank you tonight, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it tonight.